Notice of public hearing. In accordance with Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 48, Section 5, the Planning Board of the Town of Southborough will hold a public hearing on Monday, March 23rd, 2015, at 8:00 PM in the Thomas J. McAuliffe Hearing Room, 2nd Floor Townhouse, 17 Common Street, Southborough, Mass., to review a proposed amendment to the zoning bylaw of the Town of Southborough. The proposed zoning amendment will add a solar bylaw in its entirety with new text to the zoning bylaw, Chapter 174 of the Code of the Town of Southborough. A copy of the text can be reviewed in the Planning Office, Townhouse, 17 Common Street, Southborough, and the Southborough Public Library, 25 Main Street, Southborough. A copy of the proposed text is electronically available on the Town of Southborough's website, southboroughtown.com, Planning Board page. Any person wishing to be heard on the proposed changes to the existing zoning bylaw should appear at the time and place designated. Sincerely yours, Donald C. Morris, Chairman, Southborough Planning Board. Okay. And if anyone's wondering why I'm over here now, it's the cord doesn't reach the other side, so, thank you. I will, sure. So, the Planning Board, just to give you a little history of this, the Planning Board started looking at the solar bylaw last fall, and we had Town Council review it. And Town Council reviewed it, and with the understanding that we would be making some revisions. This is currently under review with Town Council. We did post this on the website, and I just want to show you where it is on the website, because some people had difficulty finding that. If you go to the Planning Board's page, and you go down, there is Town Meeting Warrant Articles on the right there. And then if you go under 2015, we have the proposed solar bylaw there, along with proposed draft solar rules and regulations. We're not reviewing the rules and regulations tonight. That doesn't go before Town Meeting for Approval. That just gets done, or approved, at a Planning Board meeting, which we hold a public hearing. And this was put in the newspaper two consecutive times. The newspaper was notified three weeks ago, so it appeared two weeks prior and one week prior to this hearing, as well as posted with the town clerk and put on the bulletin board. So with that, I'd like to begin, just to go over the proposed bylaw. Okay. So the proposed bylaw applies to commercial, large-scale, ground-mounted solar energy systems of 250 kilowatts or more. What it does not regulate is roof-mounted solar installations. It doesn't regulate commercial ground-mounted solar energy systems less than 250 kilowatts. And it also doesn't regulate residential use. Often, people ask, how big of a site does a 250-kilowatt need to be sighted on? How much land? Approximately one acre. I just thought that was a cute picture, being creative with solar panels. The proposed solar bylaw that we are proposing would be allowed in the industrial and industrial park districts by special permit and major site plan review. This would be conducted by the Planning Board. I do have a map here showing one-acre properties in the industrial park and industrial district. They're highlighted in the lighter shade purple and the darker shade. Sorry.
Can you hear me?
So, again, this is a map that we generated that is showing one-acre properties in the industrial park and industrial district. So the lighter shade is the industrial, the darker purple is the industrial park. So there are quite a few properties that are available, one acre. What we'll do next is overlay this with the zoning map, just to show you that it pretty much covers most of the zoning map. The same dimensional requirements will be met as the underlying zoning, so the same lot size, one acre, the same setbacks, lot coverage, et cetera. We're not proposing to change any of that, so that will be consistent. Again, the same map. Why do a solar bylaw in the first place? Well, it establishes standards for the placement, the design, the construction, operation, monitoring, modification, and removal of an installation. It provides for public safety, safe access, the frequency. So what are the hours of maintenance? Can they come in at 2:00 in the morning? We want to regulate that. It also provides for lighting and the financial assurance for decommissioning. Under Mass. General Law, Chapter 48, Section 3, there's an exemption. No zoning ordinance or bylaw shall prohibit or unreasonably regulate the installation of solar energy systems or the building of structures that facilitate the collection of solar energy, except where necessary to protect the public health, safety, or welfare. What we did is we looked at the state model bylaw provided by the Mass. Department of Energy Resources. We got input from the state, Kelly Brown, who's the Regional Coordinator for the Green Communities Division. We looked at quite a few other towns, Hopkendon, Sudbury, Milford, Stowe, Palmer, Harvard, Leominster, Bolton, it's quite a number of others. And we also asked a solar company that does these large-mounted systems to look at the bylaw and provide feedback. The proposed solar regulation that will be coming back at a later time is really going to address the utility notification, maintenance, emergency services, safety and security, design standards that address the lighting and vegetation, decommissioning and financial surety, and review fees. This I just put in as interest. People often wonder what makes an ideal site, and this is provided by Renewable Energy Resources. So they're looking for a relatively flat site with less than a 5% grade, that's south-facing to maximize the energy yield, not shaded by trees, buildings, or other obstructions. They need to be located close to the electric grid. Again, a 250-kilowatt can be sighted on approximately one acre of land, and a 2-megawatt system requires roughly eight acres, or 348,000 square feet. And again, the actual size depends on the shading and grading at that specific location. And then you need enclosed perimeter fence, fencing, and other security measurements. And that is all I have. So if anyone has questions on the board, or want to open it up?
I had a few questions to begin with, and some of these I already know the answer. Can you go back to that? The one that is a tree, looks like a little tree?
Sure.
That's less than an acre, right?
That is, definitely.
The text of the, actually, I want to get to the text of the bylaw because of some of the input discussions that we've had prior to tonight's hearing that I'd like to get out. So before we get to the text, why don't we open it up to questions relative to the presentation? Any questions? Mr. Jenks, microphone.
Phil Jenks, Planning Board. Jen, can you just explain a little bit more about the difference between the bylaw and the rules and regulations? That was mentioned a couple of times during the presentation.
Do you mean the procedure for adopting rules and regulations, or what it will entail?
Both would be good.
Oh, sure. So rules and regulations, the Planning Board would adopt at a public hearing. So we'd have to do, you know, notification in the newspaper and post with the town clerk. It doesn't require a two-thirds vote. What we have put in the rules and regulations, and again, this is draft, so we're still working on it, would be the utility notification. You want to make sure that they have permission to locate with the power company. It addresses maintenance, emergency services, so we would get the fire department and police involved in that to look at the fencing and make sure that they have access into the facility. We would be looking at fencing, signage, and lighting. And typically, what we're saying for lighting, it's got to be minimally used and shielded, et cetera. Signing is typically just a small sign that has emergency information on it. It addresses the vegetation, and then decommissioning. We want to make sure that in 20 years, or whenever they stop producing solar, that they remove these and they're not just left there. So we'd also get financial surety, so we'd be looking at that. And then review fees, if any. And that's pretty much it. But again, it's open for discussion, so.
Anyone else? Mr. Stein?
So, when I look at this map here, Jennifer, there's clearly going to be a number of residential abutters in these areas. Maybe you said this in the presentation, it got by me, but is there anything pertaining to the angling of the panels to minimize glare or visual impact to the residential abutters?
There is not. We're not, there is not. We're not regulating that. Again, they need to face them so they're south-facing, and we're creating the same setback that an industrial building would have. So a solar would be the same as an industrial building.
Well, I'd like to add on to that. That is one of the, I think, common concerns about these panels is the glare. And, again, we haven't gone to the text yet, but in the applicability, talks about the solar energy system, "Such use shall not create a nuisance which is discernible from other properties by virtue of noise, vibration, smoke, dust, odors, heat, glare, and radiation," and so on. So the term glare is within the proposed bylaw.
So, just so I understand, when it comes time to issue permits, it'll be reviewed at that time using this criteria?
Correct.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Carl?
Carl Guyer, 146 Middle Road. I'm here as part of the Green Technology and Recycling Committee. And some of you may know this, some may not, that we're trying to revive the effort to get Southborough to become designated as a green community, right? And it's a grant program, right? And hopefully, we'll be here in the future with a presentation about the details of that, right? We have scheduled with the Board of Selectmen to be there May 5th, to have Kelly Brown, whose name you just saw, come in and do a description, like a 101, Green Communities 101, and hopefully, we can get this moving along. But my question, because I see there might be an opportunity with this law, right? And I know this is, this diverts from what we usually do, but one of the requirements to become a green community is that you have in your zoning bylaws an as-of-right usage pertaining to green technology, either manufacturing, research, or installation, right? And I see in this bylaw an opportunity, we may be able to satisfy that need ahead of having to go to Town Meeting with a change to existing bylaws, that if we would make this bylaw an as-of-right, as opposed to special permit, which we usually do, if I think I understand this correctly, this would allow people to install it without having to come before the Board for a permit, right? It gives them the right to put in these panels, right? So this isn't an all-encompassing bylaw. It really is focused, right? So this might be a way that if we modified this to an as-of-right bylaw, right, that we could satisfy that need. There are other needs, there's some that are required, but we might be able to get a jump on this and have that change put in and meet that, one of the requirements, there's five requirements, that would meet one of the requirements, if I understand it, right? I think you've talked to Kelly Brown about this, and you might, Jennifer may, you should talk to her about before this, and she may have more input on this than I can provide. But I was wondering if you might consider that. Thank you.
Yeah, there's two, we're fully aware of that, and discussed it, and didn't know whether we would do that now, in the hopes it would be a green community, or wait until the town expresses its desire to be a green community and then change it. But then there was a separate discussion, completely different from the Green Communities thing, which is, is it necessary for the proponent to get a site plan and a special permit? So that's, I think, part of the discussion, too. If you want to jump on that, Jenny?
So with the green communities, you need to, as Carl said, have a buy-right component. You can also identify one acre site. Again, that would hold a 250-kilowatt. So if the community didn't want to have it buy-right everywhere, you could limit it to one lot, or you could just eliminate the special permit requirement and do it as a site plan review, which would qualify. That's considered buy-right. You still have to get a building permit and go through the site plan review process.
Go ahead, Carl.
Is that, can you do that through regulation, or do we have to go back to Town Meeting to do that?
To amend zoning, you'd have to go to Town Meeting.
Okay, so we'd still have to go back to Town Meeting?
Yes. Right. So if you, if the Board considered changing that now, they could make that motion on the floor, because they're making it less restrictive. So that's something that-
We could do it this year. Yes.
Oh, okay.
Because eliminating the special permit requirement makes it less restrictive. And we're, from the public hearing to the Town Meeting, and at Town Meeting floor, revisions can be made that are less restrictive, not more restrictive. And this would be less restrictive.
Yeah, I don't know, before the Town Meeting, whether we will get, will be at the point where we have decided that we want to be a green community, because we're not meeting with the Selectmen until May 5th, so it's going to be, Town Meeting's going to be over, right? So-
But the Planning Board may decide separately, again, regardless of the Green Communities thing, that a special permit is a duplication of the site plan for this particular use, and we might just reduce the administrative burden.
All right, I appreciate that.
Mrs. Bartolini.
Don't sit down, Carol. I have a question for you. You were talking about, in getting to be a green community, there are requirements that the state has, and I know that some of it has to do with zoning and the state building code, putting the state building code, stretch code in. Did you, were your comments meant to say that if, there's no way we can become a green community if we do not allow the solar by right?
My understanding is, it's not specifically targeted to solar. It's any, any of the, what they designate as green, call it industrial activity, whether it's research, whether it's manufacturing, or whether it's site installations, those all can qualify. I mean, I just, the only reason I bring this up here is I think this seemed to be an opportunity, right? So the change is underway.
But I just didn't know whether it was a regulation.
And I think, and I think the town's R&amp;D and light manufacturing is by special permit. So we don't think it would qualify under that, but I haven't reviewed it thoroughly to know that for sure, but an initial look at it.
Right. I mean, I think it would be more, for the manufacturing part, it might be more complex, because this, because solar really does carve out a specific-
Right. Right. When you were saying, when you were saying that, I was like, okay, how could this not fall into that category where we needed to allow solar, green community, green industry by right? I can't figure out how the solar plant wouldn't fall under that.
Oh, it fits right in perfectly, I think.
Well, I know, it fits in perfectly, but does it fit in legally? You must do this, or you are not going to be a green community in the eyes of the-
No, no, no. It doesn't say you have to do solar panels. It does not require that, right? Right? There's some options, right? But this seemed convenient at the time.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Sam?
Sam Stivers, 7 Presidential Drive, member of the Advisory Committee, but I'm speaking as an individual. I got a process question here. You said you were going to deal with text issues. I've got some comments on sort of the approach, and then some comments on the actual language in here, so should I save the language comments till later?
There's no more comments relative to the presentation, positive or negative, then we can move on to the text. Is there anybody else that wanted a comment? Why don't we put the text up there, Jenny? All right? You can do that.
Do you want the text of the bylaw up there?
Yeah.
Sure.
Your comments would be relative to the text that was on, that's on the website.
I have some comments about the approach, and then some comments about the text, so I'll start with the approach first. I guess I have concerns about the, I guess, the comprehensiveness or lack thereof of this. I mean, it seems to me that there are possible similar regulations for residential or non-commercial applications here, as well as commercial, which I think is appropriate to regulate. And I think that at least there is potentially some concern on the part of individuals and neighborhoods around town, if people, for example, come in and put in a 240-kilowatt private system out there somewhere that would only require a building permit, I think is the way I read this language, as opposed to these regulations. So it seems to me that it's worth actually stepping back a little bit and taking a more comprehensive view of all of the possible, or most likely, applications of this, whether it be commercial or residential, and figuring out how to come up with a set of regulations that actually protect the interests of neighbors and the abutters and so forth to these lots. I think there's some interesting locational options. Other towns have actually done this by creating an overlay district, and more surgically targeting areas where, in fact, these kinds of installations might go, as opposed to assuming that industrial or industrial park areas are the appropriate places for these kinds of commercial installations, at least. And it may be that that's a pretty good fit, but my bet is that, you know, we haven't done a specific analysis of those zoning districts to figure out is solar a good fit in those places or not. And there may be some other places where solar is a good fit. So, again, it seems to me, if you look at how people have done it, that seems to be a common approach to it. I'm confused, I guess, by the start of this language in here.
Are you going on to the language now?
Language, yeah.
The first part had to do with the 240.
Yeah, 250.
Could you address that, Jenny, as far as the state?
Sure. So the state, you're allowed to create regulations for 250 and higher, commercial, so we're not proposing to regulate residential, which you're not allowed to do, nor are we regulating sizes ground-mounted under 250. You also can't regulate rooftop, so they'd still have to get a building permit. And in looking at other communities, that's why we've identified the industrial zone and the industrial park, because we thought it would be a good place to start, and that's where other industrial, or light manufacturing uses are allowed.
Okay. Thank you. I start with A1 there, where it says, "The purpose of this bylaw," actually, start B1, excuse me, can you scroll down a little bit?
Sure.
Says, "No commercial solar energy system shall be erected or installed except in compliance with the provisions of this section and other applicable sections," which is pretty clear. And then, number two says, "Construction use of commercial, large-scale, ground-mounted solar energy system with 250 kilowatts or greater, or larger rated nameplate capacity shall undergo special permit." So that's, the first seems to say that you can't construct anything except in compliance with this section, and then the second seems to say this section applies to 250 kilowatts or larger. So it looks to me like that's inconsistent.
Okay, we'll take a look at that.
Logically, I don't see how that works. So, also, I see in here, again, reference to the regulations, which I've looked at, the proposed regulations, and as I look at the state model bylaw and other bylaws, there's a lot more detail in the regulations in terms of requirements for documentation, plans, proposals, et cetera, for the design of the facilities. And it seemed to me, again, that the more we know about these, the better off we are. So I would urge you to think about adding additional detail to either the regulations or the bylaw requirements. And I'm also concerned, I guess, about the site plan and special permit. It seems to me, again, that special permitting is more the purview of the zoning board. And I've had this conversation with the Planning Board previously, and many times during the ZAC process, it seems to me that more eyes looking at these kind of things are better. To have the zoning board deal with special permit issuance, and the Planning Board deal with site plan review seems to me to be a good, I guess, additional protection, if you will, to the neighbors and to the town relative to constructions of these types of facilities. So, again, I guess my bottom line is that it seems to me, two things. One, as I look at the way other people have done this, people have more detail in these regulations than I see here, and it seems to me that's a useful thing, not only for developers, but also for neighbors and the Planning Board to nail down the requirements more specifically. Second, again, a conversation that we've had in previous years, we are now, what, three weeks away from Town Meeting, final text, maybe this, may not be, we've, I guess, Town Council has opined on a previous version, I'd heard, but to the best of my knowledge, he's not opined on this yet. Is that still true?
This one's not that different. What we've done is taken out some parts of it and put it in rules and regulations, and I do agree with you on the rules and regulations. As I stated early on, it is still in draft format.
Okay.
So we definitely want to add more detail. What we tried to do was be consistent when looking at other towns and the state model bylaw, as well as had a solar company look at this. So we feel we are pretty consistent with what other towns are doing.
I saw more detail in the state model bylaws, as a matter of fact, was one thing I looked at, so. But, again, three weeks before Town Meeting, still, you know, not, in my view at least, final language, maybe this will be final, but we don't know yet. I guess my bottom line is, it just seems to me that we're, again, not ready for prime time on this. It's an important thing, it needs to be, I think, thought through carefully. I don't think, obviously, not a lot of people here tonight, but it's something that could affect a lot of neighborhoods out there, and I think people ought to have more exposure to this before we rush through to this Town Meeting and try to get something through. It's important to get something on the books, I think, sort of like the marijuana bylaw. Not having something like this is problematic. On the other hand, I'd rather have something that's better thought out than rushing to get something done that turns out to be somehow incomplete, so that's sort of my bottom line on it. Thank you.
Anyone else? Mr. Shea?
Brian Shea, 17 Pinecone Lane, also a member of the Advisory Committee. Just to, so you know, and everybody here knows, that the Advisory Committee has not yet made a recommendation on this. We wanted to have you folks go through the public hearing here first, and if there were any follow-up changes or modifications, we would then take action on a final version. And just one comment that I had personally, if you could go up a little bit, Jen, to see B2 under applicability?
Right here?
Yeah. So, and I know from your presentation and from the graphic that you have, that it's intended that this is only permitted in the industrial, in the industrial park zones. I guess I would recommend that, I mean, a definitive statement saying that, you know, "Commercial, large-scale, ground-mounted solar systems with 250 KW or larger are prohibited in all but industrial and industrial park districts." And then continue with that statement there. I mean, if someone could interpret that to say, "Well, if I went to put this in a residential area, then I don't need to go through the special permit and site plan review, I can just go and put it in." So I think having a definitive statement like that would help in my- So I think of having a definitive statement like that would, would help, in my opinion.
Okay.
Very good. I guess going back to that issue, I hate to disagree with the previous speaker, but quite a bit of time has been spent in looking at where these can go. And really, one of the, one of the key elements of this is the 250, and the land needed to support that, which is one acre. So when you, and it's also a commercial operation. So in our thought process, it was, well, these don't, unless people are begging for these, it's probably not a good idea to allow them in any residential district. So those were ruled out. And then we looked at the village business districts. Those are very small districts with not, hardly any open land at all to put these. So those were eliminated. Then we looked, we looked, a hard look at the commercial district, Route 9, Business Highway. And that's, tends to be a narrow strip. You can look on the zoning map, it tends to be a narrow strip right through the middle of town. And again, very limited opportunities to put these in the commercial district. And our thought process there, too, was that much of that Business Highway District abuts residential property. And so more, as looking at these, it really didn't fit, and that's why it boiled down to these two districts. But I, I think your comment is very, is very much of a help in making that clear.
Yeah, yeah. And just one point, too. I mean, obviously, with changes in technology, these units are gonna be made more and more efficient, so the footprint needed to generate 250 KW could decrease, you know, in time as well, so, which could open up more parcels and more lots, which, you know, the way things are now may not be appropriate, but in time, they might be, so.
Right, and that was one of the things that, that we received feedback on, too, was the, you know, the possible changing in the technology, but also allowing the, the industry, I mean, who knows more about the industry, the town or the solar people? So there is, there's probably plenty, plenty of room to tighten up the regulations or tighten up the language and, and more heavily regulate, you know, these installations. But the feedback that we received was more that the industry knows more about it than, than anyone, and there are limitations as to, you know, what can be regulated. One of the feedback items was, we had, there was some language that we were looking at that talked about putting a lot of the stuff underground, and the feedback from the industry was, "You can't. It has to be above ground. It's just by the nature of the, of the components." So there's, I think this first pass at it, and hopefully this will, this will pass, this will go through, was to not have it overly burdensome for the proponent to come in and do it. The industry is, you know, it's, it's out there, and they know a lot more about it than, than the town. We felt that this level of detail protects the neighbors and also protects the proponents. Did you want to add anything to that?
Yeah, I just, I also wanted to say that we looked at the industrial park and the industrial district as having light manufacturing and felt because that is identified as special permit and site plan review, it made sense to also allow solar there, too. I also have gone through this permitting process with a very large ground-mounted solar system that was almost six megawatts on 25 acres. So I've been through this solar bylaw, I've worked in a town where we've passed it and had the opportunity to be able to tweak it as we went through the application process. So I'm confident that this bylaw would work and not be, you know, too difficult for, for a solar company to cite and also protect the town.
Any more comments on the, on the presentation and the text, Mr. Stein?
Just quickly, there was a 12-month permitting period, and after 12 months, it would have to be extended. I was just curious how we, you, we arrived at 12 months and what the thought process was on that.
Don, do you want to take that, or do you want me to?
Well, you can start.
Yeah, no, I think we just, typically, if you have a special permit or a site plan review, they can expire two years for a special permit, and we just wanted to say it expired one year. That way, if they didn't construct it, they'd have to come back and either ask for an extension.
Yeah, and we looked at, you looked at and showed me some, some of the approval periods from the other towns, and this seemed to be consistent with, with those.
Right.
And I think that if, you know, that's one of the things that the solar industry would have tuned in and objected to if it was too long or too short, so that's...
Yep, and, you know, again, I think the, the item that we wanted to hear the most feedback from was the special permit and the site plan review. And the reason we identified the planning board as doing that is to make it more efficient. One board would be looking at it. But do you feel that a special permit should be required along with the site plan review?
I don't. Initially, I did, but then some of the feedback that we, that we looked at, the site plan for this type of application, and the way that this is structured in that it falls within the dimensional regulations of those two districts, that, that should be sufficient. I don't, I don't see the benefit necessarily of the special permit, and I think that would help with the green communities also. I don't know. The rest of the board? Mrs. Bartolini? Any thoughts on it?
Well, to the, to the point, I mean, I just feel that consistency in our own bylaw of one year for other renewals and for the language to be clear that it can be renewed again, because it's, some things under sort of state codes are one time and only one time for the ZBA to be able to, to act, and they can't extend it again. But under the planning boards, you can go as needed when the economy goes bad or there's a justifiable reason for this, and you want, everybody wants to wait for it to be done and done correctly.
But for the other bylaws, it's 24 months, I thought? What was, that's what, so we're gonna be consistent?
There are provisions, yeah, it's, it's more ZBA provisions versus planning board provisions than it is types of uses that vary by, by one year to two year.
Relative to the special permit or just site plan? Or both?
I'm comfortable with doing just special permit, because...
You mean site plan?
No, I'm doing...
Okay, go ahead.
If we did, if we did special permit, we can cover the same items under the special permit that we can under the site plan. My, in my, to my way of thinking, that we, there wouldn't be something that went un, undiscussed, because, and, and for the most part, we do site plan and, and special permit simultaneously here. We don't do one permit and then say, "Okay, now we're gonna start another round of hearings for, for the site plan review." So I, I don't think it speeds anything up, and if we did special permit, that's fine. If you want to do it by right and then claim special permit on it.
I think the point was that somebody constructing one of these, it would trigger site plan because of the...
Yeah.
The triggers within the, the bylaw, which deals with constructing things and parking.
Right. Square footage, probably not parking.
You're automatically gonna be going through the site plan, but you wouldn't necessarily automatically be going through special permit. Mr. Jenks?
I think the big difference between the two is if you foresee ever having the need to deny, you can only do that on the special permit. You can't use a site plan to deny a project. So I agree with Kathy, I'd be comfortable with the special permit and not the site plan.
Mr. Stein? Any comments on that? Okay.
Well, relative to the public hearing, we're over our time for our next agenda item, so I would recommend that we continue this public hearing. And there's room on the April 6th meeting to come back to this. Is that, get the comments from the board on that, if we want to continue the hearing? Mrs. Bartolini?
I guess we can continue it. I'm not sure we're gonna get much more attendance than we have this evening, and we've heard the input, but I do have some editing things that are, a word here, a word there, it doesn't change anything, and I'm not gonna tie everybody up at a public hearing tonight at quite a past nine to, to hear my thoughts on it. But I mean, it's just a question here, just literally define this word or something like that, it doesn't change the intent of the bylaw as currently drafted. So there, there will be wording changes in the text. What you're seeing, what you were seeing on the screen is not the final version, and that, that will be coming out after the April 6th continuation, I guess.
I'm just gonna ask about relative to the printing of the warrant.
Oh.
Is, has that been submitted yet?
We're going to be going before the, or I'm going to be going before the Board of Selectmen tomorrow night, where they're going to be reviewing articles. I believe they're going to close it after that, but...
And then it goes to print?
I believe so.
So the, if there's some word changes or grammar or whatever, then we could make those, you could come in tomorrow or submit those to the town planner, and then you could, you know, revise it and give it to the selectmen tomorrow night, right?
Yes.
Good. Does that, does that sound right? But I still think we should, we should continue the hearing because of the thousands of people at home who are watching this, and they may provide input to the, to the town planner, and, and we could benefit from that and still make those changes with the, with the hearing continued. And we've, you know, we've continued the hearings right up until town meeting night, although it would seem that this is a relatively simple, easy-fit proposed bylaw and can probably get it wrapped up with one continuation. Mr. Jenks? Microphone.
I'm not convinced that we need to extend the hearing, so I'll let other people give a comment on that.
Mr. Stein?
I'd like to make a motion to continue the hearing to, what did?
April 6th.
The April 6th? Eight o'clock. April 6th at 8:00 PM.
Motion's been made?
Second.
And second? Any discussion? Hearing not all in favor? Opposed? Tie goes to the runner? What?
No, I don't think so.
Hasn't passed?
No, it didn't pass.
Didn't pass. So that would mean there'd be a motion to close the public hearing.
Doesn't need one, you failed to continue it.
That wasn't a, well, we still...
Close it, you said, I'm sorry.
Yeah, to close it.
Mr. Chairman, should we clear up the, the site plan versus special permit thing before we close the hearing, at least? Because that seemed to be a point that, at least that one issue seems to be lingering.
Yeah, yeah, we can.
I would feel comfortable closing out the public hearing if we can come to a decision as a board on...
And we don't, we don't have to make that decision tonight. You know, with the public hearing, we've received the input relative to that, and we can take our, our vote at a later, right up till town meeting, you know, when it's on the floor at the town meeting, the board has the...
Well, I guess my final comment for the public on that matter would be that I sort of disagree with Mr. Jenks in that we could simply condition the site plan to the extent that it met our satisfaction.
Mrs. Bartolini?
No. You can, you can, you can negotiate a site plan, but site plan, you cannot, it's not an approval-denial kind of situation. So that if someone holds fast and says, "This is absolutely necessary and audit for the technology to work," we could not deny them the right to go forward if it was by right.
But it says in our proposed bylaw, there are conditions related to glare, dust, and other criteria, which do give us leeway for negotiation.
But discussion.
Well, if it doesn't, if we feel that it, it does not satisfy the bylaw, how can we approve the site plan?
But if the bylaw is by right...
But my, my understanding was that this was not by right for...
This is not by right, it's by special permit and site plan review is what we're proposing.
So, okay, maybe it's my ignorance, and if we rid the site plan, sorry, rid the special permit, then it becomes by right.
By site plan only. If you get rid of the special permit, you said, then it becomes by site plan only.
Right.
And building, you need to get a building permit.
Right, and that, and, and that's not comprehensive enough because we can't deny a site plan?
Correct.
Mr. Chairman, do you have a response? Cause I'm kind of...
I don't completely agree with that, but I don't think, you know, that's a separate discussion that could take us a while. So it's, if, if we're, if we're gonna close this public hearing, then I, I just don't see any harm in, in continuing it and giving, giving the public an opportunity as a result of this presentation and, you know, our discussion tonight to submit comments, none of, some of which we may not have heard and may be beneficial, and that we can accept under the public hearing. I, I just don't see the harm. I mean, if we open, if we have a, a time slot in our next agenda and there's no benefit to it, we'd just open the, you know, continue the, I mean, close the hearing? Mr. Jenks?
I, I may have confused the issue with my comment about that. My, my thinking was, if this is going to the selectmen tomorrow night, and they're going to send the warrant out for printing right after that, yes, we could keep the public hearing open, and we could take comments and then decide whether we want to try to amend at town meeting, but I'm not sure it takes public hearing for somebody to suggest some comments at town meeting. So I, I'm not sure what the function of extending it would accomplish.
I think I already stated that there may be some comments out there, you know, we're talking about, well, we know what we talked about tonight, but there may be a completely different concern or recommendation that we think is beneficial, and we'd be able to address it. I mean, we could address it anyways, but I just wouldn't want somebody to come out and say, "Well, you can't accept that comment because it's outside the public hearing." Mrs. Bartolini?
The, the point was that the hearing was being continued to April 6th, one week exactly from the opening of the annual town meeting. We are absolutely certain that the warrant with the full language will be printed and distributed by that time. So to hold open to April 6th, solicit other comments, I would say, sets people up to think that they're gonna see some, their suggestions on edits and stuff, and the, the, when they look at the warrant, it's gonna be whatever we do between now and the next few days to, to do the editing. Possible alternative is that we close the hearing, but we give... to do the editing. Possible alternative is that we close the hearing, but we give to the end of this week or, or less even. I don't, I don't know what the schedule is for being ready for, for the warrant publication. But to give a few days for additional viewer opinions to come in from tonight, and those here who had more detailed edits that they might like to suggest, or language to back up the verbal comments they provided us, that we have X number of days to do that, and then we have to do the final version. It goes to the printer. We can amend from the floor. That is, as Mr. Jenks already indicated, it doesn't prevent somebody from changing things, but it gives at least the most up-to-date version in the, in the warrant. That's, that's my thought of not having heard a lot of specific rewrites or, and we were able to talk about the commercial versus residential and rooftop versus, versus ground mount and that kind of stuff. I think that got out there tonight, and those were the quality sort of overall things that we needed to talk, to talk about.
Anyone else? So, what do you want to do?
Mr. Chairman, I'd make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
So, the motion's been made in second. Any discussion? If the, if the vote is two to two, does that mean the public hearing stays open? Because the motion didn't pass.
Yes.
Well, I mean, personally, I'm ready to close the public hearing because it seems like we're not going to, we've agreed to disagree on special permit versus site plan review. So, I don't think we're going to get anything done on that anytime soon. And otherwise, otherwise, we've, we've reached our conclusion with this, I think.
So, this board wants to leave the site plan and special permit as is intact and move forward with the...
I guess so, because we couldn't come to a consensus, yes.
Yes.
Motion's been made to close the public hearing. Any discussion? Any more discussion? Hearing not all in favor?
Aye.
Three, all opposed, unopposed. Motion carries?